You want to try your phone and see if that's better, Mayor?
Yes.
You want to try your phone?
Wait one second. I've been invited as panelists, yes. How do I do that?
You just accept. But you are a panelist. I don't, I see you as a panelist. Madam Mayor, we are live.
Okay.
And I know too.
You can't hear me. I'm trying to get better audio on my phone. Good morning, everyone. City of Lake Worth Beach. May I have the roll call, please?
May I have Betty Rush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga. Uh, I don't see Commissioner Christopher McVoy, Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
And I do not see Commissioner Sagruch. I'll let you know if they pop in.
Get my, uh, phone to see if the...
Um, Melissa. Will you figure that out? Can I just tell Melissa something real quick?
You're muted, Mayor.
Anyway, Melissa, there will be somebody to receive the proclamation on Tuesday for the overdose awareness.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is under, it is under presentations.
Yes, it is. I just wanted to double check with you and let you know that somebody will be coming.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
See, now you're breaking up. Um, okay, well, I have a couple of things to... Oh, this is gonna be frustrating. Uh, and the first thing is, we, you know, we did the...
Mayor, can you un-
You know, got some pushback, but...
Log out, hang on, log out of the laptop, because we can't-
What I was make sure-
Are you on your phone or are you on the laptop?
Everybody's break- I'm on the laptop. The phone, I had, there was echo. I couldn't figure that out.
Echo because you still had your computer on.
You keep freezing like every other sentence.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Maybe turn your camera off? Is everybody there?
Yeah, she's frozen again.
Yes.
I'm just letting Commissioner McVoy and Commissioner Sagruch in.
Hey, um, Mimi, how far is the mayor's room from your room?
Far.
No, I was thinking maybe you could just truck over to Mimi's room and both of them.
Let's, let's, let's. I'm trying to get it on my phone. Okay, I want to go off the computer now.
Is she back on as panelist on her phone?
Yeah, can I, can, um, you hear me?
Yeah, yes, much better.
I'm sorry, now I can't find my camera. How to get the camera on? Ah.
Don't worry about it now.
All right. Okay, good morning. Um, let me just start with a couple of things quick, uh, to go over before we start on the actual agenda. And I have a hard leave at 10:00 like we usually do. Um, we did, you know, we made the decision about, um, the cultural, the, the flags not going up. And I would listen, I don't want it to, you know, we talked about recognize, finding some way to recognize, um, the, you know, the, our cultures. So what I'd like to do is just not drop that. I want to have some kind of plan about the Cultural Plaza, about a flagpole, about some alternative so that we don't, so that we make good on our statement that it's not about Haiti, it's about, um, some problems that we might have in the middle, you know, at some point.
Madam Mayor, may I, um, respond to that?
Oh, thank you. Sure.
Um, I don't know if all of you received it, but I had Melissa send an email to everybody. I think it went out yesterday in regards to a resolution that was passed, um, back in two thousand and eight in regards to the city of Lake Worth taking a stand, um, and standing with Haiti and having a sister city in Haiti. And that is information that we did not have when we made the flag policy. Um, and as Anthony Sagruch had said, you know, we have a policy for the LGBTQ sanctuary city, which is why we stuck with raising that flag. And in light of not knowing that this resolution was passed, um, I would like to revisit this conversation and include Haiti with the flag raising, given that we did have a sister city and that we, you know, we have taken solidarity stand with the country of Haiti.
Well, my response to that is, yeah, we also have a sister city in Finland. Both of them have been completely inactive for at least, I mean, we haven't done anything about, you know, it's on paper that there's this thing, but we have not had a sister city relationship with either of Finnish or the Haitian community. So I would like to keep it, um, egalitarian to, you know, the plan that we had. The fact that we have a sister city, we just never, we never did anything about it. I mean, it's, it's on paper. And we also have a Finnish one, so that's my response to that. I understand what you're saying, but I, what are, what do other people have to say about that?
Um, yeah, I, I do-
Anybody?
I don't, I don't know how to raise my hand. Maybe I can figure it out. There we go.
I kept my hand up.
Do this.
I kept my hand up the whole time.
I, I, I cannot, okay, I can't see. Please just put your hand up so I can see.
Please, please recognize Commissioner May ahead of me.
Okay, Mimi?
Thank you.
Good morning, Anthony.
Um, Anthony's joined. Thank you, uh, Chris. Um, I do know then, and, and I had asked Melissa yesterday, um, uh, about the Finnish one, and she said she didn't see it. So I reached out to, um, Yana, who is the delegate that really that goes between like Finland, and she found it for us. So it says that we have a Finnish sister city in Lapinranke, um, Finland. So we do have that. Um, I don't know that, um, I don't know. I don't, I, I think that maybe we, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe instead of doing the individual sister city flags, that we, we consider a celebration of diversity um, within the city itself and celebrate all, all of our diversity. You know, something at the Cultural Plaza, which kind of makes sense because it's the Cultural Plaza, you know?
It could be the multicultural plaza. Okay.
It could be a multicultural plaza. So I do, I do want to say that, um, because Melissa and I had talked yesterday that I did find the, the sister city for, um, Finland. However, I, I'm kind of, I, I, it bother, it would, it would bother me to say, okay, we've got Haiti, we've got Finland. Well, okay, but what about the other cities? And, and I just think that it might be time to switch our focus from the flag raising to some sort of other kind of celebration of our diversity.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, and then, uh, Melissa, your hand is up.
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner May, what form is that sister city from Finland in? Because I did not find a resolution.
I just found, she found the, um, um, yeah, blah, blah, blah. What is it? The website in Finland that says that here's our sister-
Okay, but we, so we actually have a sister city in Austria that was established by resolution in two thousand. So, uh, but apparently we don't have a resolution for the one in Finland. I just would have to go to the website.
That's true, because there's always a picture of the town.
All right, thank you.
Um, yeah, there was always a, there was always a picture of the town. I believe Mayor Remicchio got a couple of trips to Finland out of that one, but I don't know exactly how that worked. Mr. McVoy?
I'd like to, you know, step back slightly, zoom out, and, um, I, I know that we're having quite a bit of discussion of, do we have some policy that would justify us raising X flag for X group in front of City Hall, but not raising Y flags for other groups in front of City Hall? And I'd like us to zoom out a little bit and ask ourselves, why do we do this? And I thought Commissioner Malaga, or Vice Mayor Valaga, gave a very good explanation of why we raise the pride flag in front of City Hall. And if I understand correctly, the reasoning summarized was that the pride flag is a very recognized symbol for a community that has come under fire, uh, from state to national policies, that, uh, is under attack and fire and threatened. And we have said as a community, we want to stand behind our residents that are part of that community. And so the criteria for me would be, what is our goal as a commission? Do we want to recognize that certain parts of our community are under attack? Do we want to recognize their symbol that means something to them, not our imposed multicultural flag or, you know, whatever? No, you go with the symbol that is recognized in the community that you want to send a message to that we support strongly enough that we're going to raise their flag in front of City Hall. It's pretty simple. You don't need to lean on, do we have a policy for this and a policy? Have we ever had a sister city with this city and that city? Uh, we don't have any sister cities in Guatemala, but it's a fourth of our population. Um, and we have been quite active in the past with the Haitian one, the Finland one. We haven't in a long time, but that's irrelevant. The question is, what message do we as a commission want to send to a portion or all, actually, we're sending a message to all our residents that we do put our money where our mouth is on diversity and we want to publicly recognize them.
Thank you. My suggestion for that, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but my suggestion for that would be, we can have a multicultural thing, but then if a city, if, if somebody wanted, um, that we could have like the Haitian Flag Day down at Cultural Plaza, not at the City Hall, um, as kind of a, uh, you know, recognizing nationality, not every nationality, we can't choose on content. That's the, you know, and I agree with you that-
We are choosing on content. We said a pride flag is okay.
Yeah, please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me. The one difference about the LGBTQ, the one thing about the LGBTQ, it's not a nationality, it's not a race, it's not anything else. It's every member of the human race is, is subject to that. Mr. Sagruch, okay, thank you, Chris. Mr. Sagruch?
Um, I would agree with, with doing something in the Cultural Plaza. Um, looking at the, the sister cities, my, my first question was, what, what have we actually done with them? When I was in, in Boston, you know, we, I was on a software council and we had a sister or brother software council in Russia with Rusoft, and we would have meetings and we would, you know, have discussions and we would work together on certain issues. And, you know, it was, it was an amazing process and we learned a lot, um, by sharing our cultures, but also our experiences and so on. If, if we were actively doing something, I could see us making that argument. Uh, if, if we're not actively doing something, to me, it's really just a symbolic thing without any action. And that's just, for, for me, that's just virtue signaling. Um, I, I think if we truly want to do something with our sister cities, we should. Um, and I, I think the Cultural Plaza is a great place to do that, but I think in addition to that, we should actually be doing something with these cities. Um, for, you know, otherwise the rest, which is something we did twenty years ago and never, you know, it, it's worth just as much as the proclamation. Um, so I'd be all for, um, exploring something deeper within the Cultural Plaza, but I think if we are going to have these sister cities relationships, we actually do something. Um, we actually have-
Yeah, you came in a little late. I had pointed out that nothing had been done for any of our sister cities for years and years and years. So I agree with you on that. It's, I don't want it just to be like, oh, it's a sister city and it doesn't mean anything. So, all right, so I just, I just wanted, you know, let's not forget this issue, which we, which we brought up. Um, I don't want to dwell on it forever, but, um, I just want to, let's continue that conversation. The next thing I have today is, um, uh, I spoke with Barry Friedman the other day. Um, Chris, your hand is still up. I spoke with Friedman the other day.
It's for whenever there's an opportunity. Not, not on the flag, not on different issues. I'm just getting in the queue.
Well, you're just gonna have your hand. All right, all right. Um, uh, Barry, um, is, wants to sell the business. He, um, and the folks from Mama Mia's Pizzeria want to take over his, they want to assume his lease.
Can you clarify, who that, who are you talking about?
I'm sorry, the T-shirt, I'm sorry, the T-shirt company up at the, uh, up at the casino. Barry Friedman, who's been our tenant for a hundred years. Um, he wants to sell, you're welcome. And he, um, Mama Mia's, Anthony from Mama Mia's wants to assume his lease and keep it as a T-shirt company, not make it, they can't expand, um, through Killman's, but I, I would like to get that on the agenda. It's a, it's a, it's just a pure assumption of the lease. He's got twelve more years on the lease. Um, and he would like to get that done so he can, on September, the second meeting in September. Uh, Jamie?
Good morning. Um, I mentioned this to, uh, city attorney, um, earlier on this week, uh, because we do need to, uh, we haven't had this before, but I know that, um, what is now Ocean Walk took over the former Mulligan's lease, but they ended up changing the name and some other stuff too. This would, from what I understand, stay is still the T-shirt shop, so it'd just be, uh, basically taking over the existing lease but not changing anything. But just from a legal perspective, we just need to make sure that there's nothing, um, from our standpoint we need to do. So we are looking into that.
Okay, thank you. We're not renegotiating the lease or, you know, it's just, so, um, so can we get that on, for better, for worse, get that on the September nineteenth, um, agenda?
I, I will double check with the city attorney, because again, I, I don't know what needs to be done as far as when you're doing that. I don't know if there's something in, um, that, the existing lease that says if that happens, it opens it up to be renegotiated or something like that. So we just need to do our due diligence.
Sure, sure. I just, um, and I don't have it with me, so I, I need to take a look. So, um, those were, let me just see if anything else I have.
Hold your hands up.
Okay, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to let you know that we are looking into it and we'll, we'll,
Oh, okay.
If possible, we'll bring it forward.
Okay. Um, Mimi and I are up at the Florida League of Cities, uh, thing, and we had really good stuff yesterday. We got some very good, um, information regarding the property tax, like an hour on the property tax issue. And, which is, they're very serious about, and they gave us some good suggestions as to how to, you know, deal with that before the Legislative Committee happens again. And, um, a big thing about artificial intelligence, also a very good thing. Um, I took pictures of all the screens and I'll bring them back and pass them out. So we're learning stuff up here. It's, um, pretty full calendar. So, uh, Mr. McVoy, I see your hand is still up, and I'm, would you like to say something? About anything? Hello? Chris?
He appears to be frozen.
Okay, all right. So, um, up next, and what, let's talk about the, I also have things about the agenda, but, um, let's, I don't want to monopolize the conversation. What's anybody got about the agenda?
I have a question about the parking garage.
Go ahead.
Um, and, and full disclosure, I did, I started school this week, so I have not had my one-on-one. So if this is something that everybody else has already asked, I apologize. Um, when I'm looking through the background or the, um, the backup, it looks like, and I, I was the first commissioner to meet with everybody, so, um, I'm sure that there was a lot of discussion post-Mimi. And what I'm seeing here is that it looks like...
Which item are you on, Mimi?
I'm on item, um, unfinished business G.
It's, it's F, actually.
Oh, I have the old, um, I have the old agenda. I apologize. But if you have your book, Sarah, it's G.
Thank you, I do.
Okay, so I'm looking at it and it looks to me like in the two pictures, one of the pictures has the, um, parking garage going all the way down to First Avenue South, which I know we talked about doing, and I talked about that in my meetings with the, um, architect and Chen Moore. The other one is adding on another, and then it with, my understanding was that that would delete the fifth floor because we would be up to two hundred and eighty-one spots. But now it seems that there's another, the fifth floor's been put on and we're back, we're up to three hundred and sixty-three spots. So that obviously happened in other meetings, which is totally fine. I just want to hear a little bit about how that extra floor got on, how the price stayed the same, and, and how, what are we doing with this terrace?
Okay, Jamie, how about you talking about that?
Yeah, we're gonna, you're gonna see multiple options that came up through these one-on-ones we had with the architect and each one of you. Um, we just wanted to make sure we were able to cover in this conversation next Tuesday, everything that came up. So it's just talking about different options and looking at, um, what some of those options do as far as space count and, uh, and overall cost of the garage itself. So we just want to make sure we're on a cover basis.
Does this rendering of the five floors, does it still, is it still under the eight point six?
The rendering of the five floors? You said is it still under eight point six?
Is it still at the eight point six price point?
Not, not with, not with five floors.
Yeah, that, but I don't see a price point for adding that on. That's what I'm saying. I guess the presentation will include the following discussion items. So I'm assuming that, oh, here we go. They're gonna tell us at the presentation what the cost for the fifth level. Okay, thank you.
Because what we're doing is we're basically putting some estimates together. Again, these are just some of, some of the concepts that came up. So we don't want to put an extraordinary amount of time into doing a full-out, you know, um, estimate for this, but we can do some, some back of the envelope type of stuff.
Right, but I mean, if it comes back at eleven million, clearly we're not putting a fifth floor on.
Again, we, we will have estimates for pricing depending on where you guys want to go. So-
Okay.
That's part of the whole conversation. We just want to make sure we're covering on our bases and covering, uh, what, what came up in discussions with each one of you.
Okay, Mr. Sagruch?
I was just gonna quickly say, I, I was a proponent of the, the flip, the fifth floor. My reasoning behind it was to be able to do some sort of green space for the public, um, at the top of the garage. A lot of people have come to me and, um, really supported that idea, especially those in that localized area. The other was talking about net spaces. So when we just talk about the gross number of spaces, the four-floor parking design, um, nets us very few spaces relative to the total project. So the concept was, how do we add some green space for, for the public, make it not look like a concrete behemoth and a heat island, um, in, in, in the middle of our city, but also net the maximum spaces, because in my opinion, we get one shot at this to do it right. Um, and it's not like you're going to add something on top of an existing parking garage. The amount of spaces needed, the hundred and fifty, comes from a study in twenty eighteen. So since twenty eighteen, I'm willing to bet that number has increased, not decreased. And our other land parking, um, areas within the city, over time, those are probably going to get developed and go away. So that's where my motivation for that was, was looking at this, is we've got one good chance to do this right. Let's maximize and get the maximum number of spaces as well as create an amenity for the public, um, and reduce the heat island effect.
Right, and I don't disagree. I just didn't see a cost to it. That's all I was asking.
Yeah, no, and, and, and the, and the cost, you know, they, they're gonna have a rough estimate on it. I was under no illusions that it would, would add a lot of cost, but we were able to, you know, look at some other areas and find creative ways of budgeting for that, and monies that are sitting in, in buckets elsewhere that weren't utilized and so on, that could make up that difference in, in my opinion. So that's, that's really where, where I came at it from.
Well, yeah, in terms of the, I like the idea, because on the, on page two fifty-eight of the agenda, I'm on the computer. Um, it has that sketch of the top floor, which the, the one end is set off with some green, you know, to, to use it as a public space, even if we don't need all those spaces before. Ms. Malaga?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just, my, my two things on the agenda are, um-
Oh, okay, we were just talking about the garage, yeah, saying about the garage?
No, I'm good. I had my one-on-one and I asked all my questions.
Okay, uh, Mimi, are you okay with moving on with the garage?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, um, then we'll go to Sarah. Sarah?
Thank you. Um, on consent agenda A, I had inquired in regards to the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park because there was no plan, um, or details like there was for the gymnasium in regards to what was going to happen at the fitness park. And Tiana did send me an email. Tiana, if you can forward that to the rest of the commission, I think that, um, that's important just for, you know, informational purposes. I don't know.
Sure, I can, I can absolutely do that. Good morning. Thank you. Uh, just to note, what we did mention is very quickly is we will be, I will also email, but we will be removing the existing cement pad. We will be updating fitness equipment, adding mulch and making improvements to the park with the CBDG funding, and I will follow up with an email.
Thank you.
And let's remember that if we're sending emails to one commissioner, that's something that we all need. We need to make sure we're sending it to everybody.
Yep.
Um, yeah. Um, is unfinished E, resolution, uh, amending the city commission rules and procedures. This is actually something that I brought up during a pre-agenda meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, I've heard loud and clear from a lot of residents that they understand what my point was uh, in regards to bringing this up and making sure that commissioner comments were only relevant to city business. But in hindsight, that we've had FHP, um, here in our city, and as recently as two days ago. Um, I would like to kind of pivot maybe and not pigeonhole or give direction on what a commissioner or a mayor can talk about, but in lieu of, can we instead say, let's do a time, three minutes certain, whatever you can get in that three minutes, if you feel it's important to your constituents, then go ahead, you got three minutes. Um, so I, I don't know if I have any support for that, but I have heard loud and clear from a lot of residents who support the idea, but, you know, they also are on the other side saying, you know what? It really is the electorate's position, whatever they feel, um, you know, like Mimi was just talking about Finland, you know, if you came to us and said, hey, you know, we have this Finnish city, that's really not something that's in our city, but it does affect the city. So I would like to try to get support for, instead of limiting what we talk about, just limiting the time for each person.
Thank you. I'm, I'm looking at the latest revised agenda online, and I don't see anything about this. E, F, I don't see a G.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, um, it was removed from the agenda.
Oh, okay. Oh, so it's not on the agenda?
Yes, I sent a revised agenda. Um, I don't remember what day, but yes, it was removed.
When is it moved to?
It was not moved anywhere yet.
Okay, so-
There were some issues with it, so the city attorney was looking into it, so it's been removed and not put back on anywhere.
Okay, well, if we get consensus to change the language before it comes back, I would appreciate it.
Okay, um, a lot on that. I mean, listen, I think we should all be grown up enough, you know, I think we made a mistake, uh, years ago when, um, the Ukraine, it was an emotional moment, and I brought that forward, and I would not do that again. Um, but, uh, you know, I would hope that we're all grown up enough, but the, the time issue is, is, is an issue. Um, and I, we've all heard a lot of feedback from different people in our community about this issue. I hear a lot of people saying, you know, how about the potholes? How about the city issues rather than the, the global issues? And I think, um, we should, I think as a city, we should be sensitive to that, but, you know, that's a personal choice, I guess. So next, I guess, Chris, you had your hand up, and again, we're at nine thirty now, so let's keep an eye on the time. Let's do, you know, two minutes each, and then we go forward. If we have more time.
I really want to recognize the mayor for, um, your reliability and consistency in every time that I am going to speak, emphasizing how little I should be allowed to speak. I want to call that out explicitly. It happens every time I open my mouth. And I have a right to express things for the rest of the community, and I know that I speak for a lot of them, and I do not appreciate every time I open it, being asked to keep it to a time limit. At the last meeting, I was told, I was, yes, you were told everyone, but you don't do it. At the last meeting, I was told for, I forget what issue, a big issue, parking garages, and I had only three minutes. And then another commissioner was allowed to go on for seven minutes about a lease of giving money. Yes, it did happen. It's been timed.
All right.
It's in the record. Okay, thank you. Um, I would like the floor right now.
You have it. You have it. Use, yeah, we all should use responsibility and, 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 you know, we just be aware of time. Everyone be aware of time. We don't have much time. Go ahead.
It, the, uh, there was a unfortunately not quite correct statement made earlier that, um, was not intentionally incorrect, I'm sure, that FHP, Florida Highway Patrol, was in our city as recently as two days ago. That is incorrect. They were in our city in a very big way yesterday. Uh, if I'm a little tired and perhaps a little bit snippier, um, than I might like to be, it's because I was trying to help out five-year-old, eight- Five year old, eight year old kids and mother. From a situation with FHP and an enormous amount of PBSO involvement and PBSO resources. In our city last night until one in the morning. Got another call on it at six thirty in the morning. I have mentioned before at a number of meetings, and in fact, that is part of what led to that rule change suggesting that I not be able to talk. I have mentioned that in our city, there is an enormous. Amount of fear. Of anxiety, of mental health stress to parents. And especially to schoolchildren in our city. Unprecedented things are happening in all of the time that I have lived in Lake Worth. I do not recall any instances of seeing Florida Highway Patrol in the city. I see them on ninety-five all the time. I have not seen them, I personally. Other people may have. I have not. They have been very much present in the city, and I understand that they can go anywhere in the state, so it's nothing illegal about that. However, we have our own law enforcement in the city. We pay a very big part of our budget to law enforcement. And we are concerned about is law enforcement or PBSO District fourteen overtaxed? And maybe not able to handle things in right of ways accessing the lagoon? Or maybe not able to have the resources to attend to Bryant Park activities? Well, let me tell you. Last night, for four hours or more. There were more than eleven PBSO vehicles. In the three hundred block of C Street. Way more than eleven PBSO officers. ICE was there, Florida Highway Patrol was there. The best information I have at this point. Is that. Somebody was pulled over for. Moving violation, driving without a license. At some point, and I do not have the details because they're not publicly available yet. They resist, they attempted escape uh is apparently, so they did not want to get picked up. That resulted in on three hundred block. An enormous police turnout, including the PBSO helicopter. I would be quite interested in what kind of cost was associated with all of that effort. I would like. Us as the city. To have on an upcoming agenda, I don't, doesn't have to be immediate, but it should be soon. A discussion of what we ask PBSO to do, what we want them to do in our city. They are our contractor. We need to understand, and a very big part of our budget, we need to understand fully. How they work with other agencies, what the responsibilities are, what our level of control is, and how. We are going to serve and protect our residents, all of our residents, all of whom. Are entitled to serve, being served and protected and entitled to do. Process under the constitution. I would like my ask to my fellow commissioners is first to acknowledge. The trauma. That is happening in our city, the very substantial fraction of students who are not coming. To some of our elementary schools. This is a big deal. This is a big point in our history. We need to decide how are we going to step up to it? And as a first step to that. I would like us to add to the agenda a discussion item of PBSO. And I would like staff to be requested to bring back to us some information of what other cities are doing. Cities, maybe counties, but cities most prevalent. Around the country to protect their citizens and their residents. We have a responsibility to all residents. I would like that. I would like consensus from my colleagues. That we have a discussion. On a so soon upcoming meeting of that and ask staff to bring us some information, what other cities are doing.
Thank you. I see Mr. Brown's hand was up. Is it still up? Mr. Brown?
Oh, no, I I put it down. I, when you guys were talking about the item with Tiana, the playground. Um, all that information is in the staff report. That was that was emailed out, so that's all I was gonna say.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, that that was five minutes. Mr. Segridge, we'll do five.
Um, so, thank you, Mayor. Um. In in terms of what Mr. McVoy was discussing, we already do have a consensus item to talk about PBSO priorities. Um, that got pushed from one one meeting, um, and I'm sure we'll come back on another, so.
Do we not have a workshop? Do we not have a workshop scheduled? Wait, uh, do we not, do we have, Madam Clerk, do we have a workshop? I thought we had a workshop scheduled on that.
Special meeting scheduled, but it was canceled due to not everyone being available. And we haven't rescheduled it yet.
That's what I thought, okay. Well, I think, you know, we should, because we do have issues with this shit, you know, just parks and stuff, so I think it's not a bad idea to have that. I mean. Um, I remember a few weeks ago when it came up, the sheriff responded. To what he thought was my statement about how we're dealing with um ICE, but um. You know, I, Chris, you know, I mean, you're, it's horrible what's going on. It's horrible what's going on. Um. You know, what our role is as a city is is a question, so. I I have no problem finding out what other cities, if, you know. As a matter of fact, I was with the mayors the other day and I wanted to say, what are people doing about this? But there just wasn't time. Um. So I, Chris, could you find out? Do you have people that could find out?
I would like consensus from my colleagues for our staff to be tasked. We have a legal staff. To and and other staff to bring us information of what other cities are doing. Your statement is extremely. Correct and accurate. What is going on is horrible. And there is a.
We understand, uh, in in time, Chris, I'm sorry. Um, but I don't, I mean, our staff, you know, how much can they do? Um, and I know that there's people that are very interested in this issue. I'm just knowing if some other group has not done that kind of research. Mr. Segridge, you still had time?
Yes, um, so this this is Atlas. He's a puppy and he helps with crankiness, so hopefully that'll help you, Mr. McVoy, to to see some joy. But um, uh, in going back to what um.
Where's Scarlett?
Uh, oh, Cheryl will get her.
Sarah, I love you, but let's keep going.
In terms of what what Sarah was was talking about, our commission liaison reports. I've struggled with a number of things with um timing and bringing it forward, so I am definitely in support of having a time fixed. Um, for our reports. I also talked with staff, um, and I think it would be a good idea for for us to have the option to submit our reports. To our colleagues the Friday before um in writing, because a lot of these things that, you know, you want to bring up. You've got some finer detail points that if people were able to read them ahead of time, it would make our discussion on the dais much quicker. Um, and much more effective. So I would like to to basically. Start doing that practice if that is acceptable via the sunshine to submit our reports ahead of time. Um, the Friday before.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Chris, Chris, I I. Chris has a question before us with the with the um ICE and the sheriff's office, looking for consensus. I have no problem finding out what. So let's let's stick on that one for a second.
So I I don't think our city has any business telling government agencies that are higher than us at the federal level what they can and cannot do. I think that's a dangerous road to go down, and I think it only hurts our city from an interdepartmental standpoint. I commend Chris on his activities that he's doing on his own personal time. Um, he's definitely a champion for his cause. I do not think as a city, we want to open that can and subject ourselves to the retaliation that it will bring.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah?
Um, thank you. I. I'm a little frustrated because we have spent, and I say we, those of us who have been serving in some capacity in the city. And in my neighborhood, Royal Point, Tiana, I have spent years. Working on the Make the Call Y'all campaign and getting our community to trust PBSO and to report crimes. And to make sure that they knew they had protection. So I would be in favor of having PBSO give us their insight because I think that it will help mend some of the fears that are out there. Um, and that I think that some of the PBSO that's called upon, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner McVoy. But if you flee the police, you will be tracked down. That's just, I don't care if you stole a candy bar. That's just breaking the law. I don't want the people who aren't aren't in that category not feeling comfortable calling PBSO because we need that in this city. We need that. That relationship that we have worked so hard on with Morales and Mahoney and, you know, the boots on the ground. And I think that I I would support this because I would want PBSO to tell the community, we're here for you. That's why the city pays us is to be here to protect you. But if you break the law, on the other hand, we're gonna arrest you. You know, if I break the law, I know that PBSO, regardless of the fact that I'm a vice mayor, they're gonna arrest me if I do something like flee them in the middle of 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 an issue. So I I'm I'm balanced on both sides, but I would like to have them come just to help. Mend the relationships and let and let the community really know what they're doing and what the community should and shouldn't do. If you get a knock, here's your rights. If you, you know, don't flee us if you have nothing to run from. And I think that that is a great educational component that we need to focus on.
Good point. I also think I had heard it, I read somewhere that whatever that was the other day, and I'm, I don't know, but um. There was an outstanding warrant involved with that, I think, with that person. But I don't, again, I don't know. It's something I had read. Mr. Segridge?
I would echo what what Commissioner Malaga said, you know, uh, if you're gonna flee police, you should expect that you're you're going to jail. Um, yeah, I. If you have a warrant, you should expect that you're going to jail. If you're driving without a license, you should expect that you should go to jail. Um, regardless of status or or any of that. Um, I had um some other items, or are we still on this?
Okay, go, um, well, so Commissioner McVoy, I I don't know that you're getting consensus to do exactly what you want to do. I think we all have feelings about what's going on, but I I'm tending to go with. You know, let's talk to the sheriff's office, you know, to, we do have a good relationship with sheriff's office in this town. We do, we have for years. And that's as a result of a lot of hard work on people's part, so um. Uh, we don't tell them how to behave. That's not our job. Uh, so I I would, I would suggest or go along with Segridge and Malaga about, and then Mimi, I don't know if your hand is up or not.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm listening and I and I agree that the conversation can be had because it would be nice to know, are they? Where is the? How are, how are we directing them versus the sheriff? You know, I mean, who who is the ultimate boss and how does that work? You know, I don't.
It's the sheriff.
Right, and I don't actually know that, so that kind of um explanation would be. Would be good, you know, and for them to to kind of explain to us some of the decisions that they're making regarding um. Some of the hot button issues that we have. So I don't have a problem bringing them forward, and I think that was already on the books. Um, I don't know that I would promote um. Legal spending some time on this. I think there's enough people spending time on this that we don't need to spend city legal time on it.
Right. Okay, so Chris, I think you have your answer. Um, and we'll, and um. I guess staff maybe work on a, trying to reschedule that special meeting. Okay, okay, um, Mr. Segridge, you have something else?
Yes.
It's nine forty-five. Keep an eye on time.
Yep, um, so unfinished A, the golf course. I just wanted to commend leisure services on the job they did with that survey. Um, that was a consultant level piece of data gathering that they did. Um, and it was very helpful, um, informative. In terms of um the decision that we have before us on that. Um, some members of the community did miss out on it, but there was, you know, apparently ample time and and fair time given to all. Um, and I would just encourage the public that are watching that did not get to participate in that survey, please show up at the meeting and and give your public comments.
Yeah.
Um, under new business A, the streets and parking. Um, there seems to be the section missing from the backup around overnight parking. Um, I did talk to Jamie about that in my one on one. Um, hopefully we can get um that section included in the backup. So I didn't.
Unfinished A?
Yeah, unfit, on a, uh, no, I'm sorry, new business A, uh, street parking. Um, in the memo, it talks about uh section nineteen dash seven that got added regarding overnight parking. Which was going to be greater clarity to our overnight parking rules. Um, that section was not included. Um, when I spoke with uh Jamie in my one on one. It it was, they were maybe thinking of putting it in a, in section twenty or twenty-one or or something like that, but it. The backup's still not in in the in the backup, and I see Jamie has his hand raised.
Jamie?
Yeah, so um originally it was gonna be chapter nineteen, it's actually going to chapter twenty-one. I did speak with Elizabeth uh the other day. The the actual agenda did not get updated, the actual uh agenda item. Uh, but that'll be coming to a future meeting. And Elizabeth, uh, do you have a status on that? I know we were looking at.
I need to check with parking. I know that they have reviewed it and they were reviewing chapter twenty-one to see if we needed any additional changes in the parking section. But I think it should be ready to come uh next month.
Okay. So yeah, so unfortunately, Commissioner, it just didn't get updated in the actual agenda item itself, because we.
Okay, so there's no way of getting that in 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 this round?
It um. Would, it has to be a separate ordinance because it's related to a separate chapter and different things, so that's why it got pulled from this item.
Understood. Thank you. Um, and then, you know, just going back to our commissioner liaison reports. Um, I would just, you know, like to get legal's opinion that is it okay for us, if we want to. To submit our liaison report to our fellow commissioners the Friday before. Um, in some form or writing, um, that could be shared in the backup um with the public. Don't need an answer now, but I just wanted to to have that question raised.
So long as it's a one-way submittal, it does meet sunshine requirements. Um, my. Suggestion would be that if you want to do things in writing that they comply with the agenda deadlines and make it as. Something that's part of the agenda um under that section.
Okay, um, so I I would then, you know, maybe ask consensus of our um of my commissioner um colleagues. Whether or not we could set a a separate agenda timeline item on um the liaison reports, because I feel. The agenda, when it gets published, can spark some things that we need to bring to consensus and some other stuff. Um, so just seeing if there's any support to to make that deadline the Friday. Before the meeting, um, or Thursday before the meeting to submit our liaison report.
I have an issue with that.
You mean me?
Sorry, I haven't, thank you. I have an issue with that regarding. So, for example, if I'm giving an NAPC update, the NAPC meeting is the first Saturday of the month. So if we have a meeting on a Tuesday, I can't get your report on a Friday. Um, so I I I think that's kind of um micromanaging. I think if somebody wants to put forward a a written report, go for it. But I don't have any desire to have a report due a Friday before every meeting.
I was saying optional. If you felt that it was important to to get, share some information, so like if you if you had a particular point you were trying to raise in your liaison.
I mean, the other way, Anthony, the other way you could look at it would be if you didn't feel that you had the time or. Um, completeness ability to share your entire report on on the meeting on a Tuesday, you could submit. Submit it at in writing and it can be put into the minutes. For that meeting. For example, you could say, because sometimes we run out of time and we don't have commissioner liaison reports, but they can still be submitted in writing for the minutes. Or they could be submitted in writing for the next agenda. Um, I just think that to do. For me, I think that that would be. I would rather do it after than before. If that makes sense.
Well, I think, I get apparently we can do, I mean, if if um legal is telling us it's okay, I guess we could do it. I don't, I would just hate there to be an expectation that you do it before because then people, well, he's doing or she's doing it, but you're not kind of. Yeah, I don't know. It's interesting. Um, okay, now, um. And I have some more specific agenda things that I want to talk about, but I may, we may not have time. I may have to do this. One on one on Monday with staff. It's just language stuff about the abandonment and also about um. Uh, oh God, I have so many notes. Um, mostly not substantive stuff, mostly um. Just questions. I'll do that on Monday because we are running out of time. Um, Chris?
Uh, oh, thank you. Um, I was concerned to see that the two quasi judicial hearings. On a pretty important topic were taken off the agenda. And I then learned that they were put on the utility meeting agenda. And um I would say that that is not a very good public. Say that that is not a very good public involvement look. Because there is a lot of interest in that project and I don't think it is reasonable to expect. Uh, the, our residents to go looking at the utility agenda to see a quasi judicial on something that has nothing. Or two quasi judicial hearings on something that has nothing to do with the utilities. Um. I would suggest that if the deadline was not met as uh apparently was the case. That we simply move it to the next regular meeting, which.
I see Jamie's hand is up. I see Jamie's hand is up. Mr. Brown?
Jamie, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, and maybe Elizabeth's discussed, but the quasi judicial is only the the first reading. The the second uh reading of those is not a quasi judicial hearing. Um, and it was just scheduled for the the ten-day uh statutory um notification period. Uh, they didn't get it out in time, unfortunately, so it just got pushed to the next um regularly scheduled uh. Commission meeting, which was the utility meeting. And those are, and those are, and well, they're they're pushed out through the clerk's office just like any other meeting. As far as um the notification and everything else.
But I'm, why wouldn't it go to a regular agenda meeting rather than a utility agenda meeting?
We especially do the next meeting. If you guys would like to do that in the future, we can easily do that.
It makes sense.
I I beg to differ just on on accuracy. I'm looking at the agenda that was put out before public hearings, quasi judicial hearing twenty twenty-five oh seven. For item A, item B, quasi judicial hearing ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six. There were two. On the previous agenda. Now, whether there's two on the utility, I don't know. I can't speak to that.
Well, it's fine. Okay.
Uh, I, but I just think it's very inappropriate.
I agree. It shouldn't, it shouldn't go on the uh. But it does say quasi judicial on the agenda.
And we can do that moving forward if that's if that's the desire, but we.
The clerk, let's stop. The clerk wants to say something?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't know what is qua, what is a quasi judicial and what isn't a quasi judicial. If, um, so it was my mistake. I had it on the agenda as quasi judicial. And then I learned the quasi judicial is only the first reading, so mea culpa. And I apologize.
Can we not?
Something new.
Every day we learn. If you don't learn something, you lost something. Can we not put re, put it on the first agenda in uh September? On a regular commission meeting?
We can do that going forward, yes.
Uh, can we do it on this one? That we incorrectly put it on?
No, it's already been published. The notification's already been published.
Uh, well, the notification was published for the nineteenth and we pulled it off, so that that.
Mr. McVoy, please don't argue with her. Um, can we get it on the first agenda in September? I think we have uh consensus. Do we have consensus to take it off the utility agenda and put it on a regular commission meeting? Elizabeth, oh wait, I see Ms. Lane, Elizabeth's hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify. For the quasi judicial hearings that come before you all for um. Comprehensive and land use plan amendments, those are. Uh, or land use amendments, those are quasi judicial at the first reading. However, if there is new evidence. That is going to be presented at the second hearing, the second hearing may also be quasi judicial. But it's not necessarily if there's nothing new to come forward. So just to clarify on your process.
Thank you. So it's not quasi judicial if there's nothing changed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are so close to the timer. Who's got their hand up?
You asked.
Mr. Waters, I'm gonna pop, I'm gonna, yeah, can, do you have consensus?
Yeah, no, I think it's fine to put it on the utility meeting. It's the next meeting.
I'm fine with the utility meeting.
Mr. Segrich?
I'm fine with the utility meeting.
And I'll, to be clear, I am not.
Yeah, I'm I'm not either. I think we should move it, but we're out voted. Um, I see Mr. Waters' hand was up and I I'm gonna cut out in about one minute because it's nine, it's.
It was up and now it's down, Mayor, and all I can say is that it's advertised for the utility meeting. If you had wanted to move it to the first meeting in September, you would have had to open those hearings. And uh table them and to a date certain, which would have been this another meeting.
Okay, well, then for.
Three people are okay with it on the utility meeting.
All right, so it's not gonna be moved. I think in the future, though, let's not put things that are not utility on, even if it's just the next. Commission agenda, people are, and I have said to many people, you've gotten this, this was my mistake, mea culpa before I was elected. If you don't pay attention to the what's coming up, you're gonna get um. You know, you're you're gonna get caught flat-footed, so I am, it's.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Uh, uh, real quick, and and I we're running out of time, so it's a discussion for another time, but. We do have item, utility items that go on to regular meetings and we do have regular uh meeting items that go on to utility meeting items. We've done that many times in the past, depending on the timeframe, so. If we want to now start saying that if it's utility related, it cannot go on to a regular meeting and vice versa.
No, you're right. People, people need to pay attention to what's going on. I guess that's the bottom line, and I am gonna cut out because I've got to be in court. Court in two minutes, so.
People that can really care about this item, they know where it is.
Yep, okay, so um if anyone, I mean, I, oh, it's, we've got two minutes left. I really do need to go. Can I? Can we end this or do I turn this over to Vice Mayor Malaga for the next thirty seconds? I'd like, because we have a hard close at ten anyway.
I don't see anybody else have any other issues, especially we can cover in two minutes.
Well, I see Chris is, okay, Chris is.
No, that was leftover.
Okay, thank you. So let's then just, I'm, no problem. Let's just then uh. And this, and have a great weekend, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, staff. See you soon. Bye.
Have a great weekend.
You too. Bye-bye.